Get us started here gentlemen and ladies, let's say the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, looks like we got everybody up front here, so that's a good thing. Vance, as far as the minutes go, if you want to just do some highlights, if there's anything that you want to go over with, otherwise, we can forego that if we want tonight because we're a little late with getting things going here.
Yeah, you know, I'm okay with that. We have, we need to approve June nineteenth in the special meeting.
Yeah, and I didn't see anything in there that was different, so.
Again, June nineteenth and the twenty-second?
Yep.
And, uh, have you all, have you read, have you read the minutes?
I did.
Any questions?
No.
No.
Concerns? Okay, let's roll then.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, Sharon did the motion, Dave did the second. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would that be inclusive, Sharon, with the special meeting as well?
Yes.
If you want to do a second one, we'll do that Vance, that's fine.
Your preference.
Okay.
All right, then we move on to the consent agenda.
Yeah, any questions on the consent agenda? We have, um, I will report to you that the bond funds came in today for Lost River, a little over five million dollars. I wrote a check to KPH today for one point one. Uh, you, we're gonna ask the board to approve, I believe it's pay quest three tonight, Jim?
Three.
And, um...
That's on the consent agenda here, that's the six hundred and sixty-sixth pick.
Yep, that's correct.
But you said you wrote a check for one point one Vance?
That's pay request two.
We, we did that last month, but the funds hadn't been secured yet, so we're good to go.
So, we're good on all that?
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, they worked hard to get that done.
Yes, they did. Appreciate, thank your officer for moving that along quickly.
Good work.
Let's just hope we don't have to do that again. You know, I don't...
You know, one other, one comment I'd like to make on that is, you know, after we had that meeting, I was a little distraught that we kinda just slipped under the cracks. The one thing I think that was brought up, is that a conversation with somebody is, you know, you move too quickly on a bond, and just hypothetically, you come across an Indian burial ground or something. What do you do once you set those bonds? How do you get more if you need it, if you, if you come with a big overage?
You just go through the process again and just give another bond to pay for the cost.
Like he said in that meeting too, or John talked in the meeting, that as we get larger and you're doing more in one bond, you know, it's kind of the ability, you'll have money coming in and that, that you can cover it.
Yeah, he was saying that to West Fargo, doesn't it, it's like twenty-nine at a time where they hit a bond. Rather than just one for...
We just gotta ask for more money then.
Yeah, yeah.
Problem is, it's so small.
We just went through that.
So, one question on the consent agenda, the glacier air prices, the, I've actually got highlighted here, the service at two seventy-two. What was that?
There was a big sinkhole underneath the, they mentioned it at the last meeting, it was when they replaced the drain.
Oh, yeah, okay, yes.
Way to dig out both sides of the road, around the storm sewer, reset the storm sewer.
Okay.
It's a decision we made at the time.
I, it just, how timely, there, there is a perfect use of the hydroclines right there.
Right, exactly. Yep.
That's where it came out.
That's where it came out.
Okay.
Any other questions on the consent, you guys?
Motion to approve. Okay, John does the motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Hey Brian does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh, let's see, the regular agenda.
Excuse me Cory, Cory, uh, say Cole. Jesse called me, I think, five thirty today to photocopy the report. Do you have the report?
I do, yeah.
Okay.
I've got it as well.
Okay.
I can show it on the overhead.
But can we get copies of it sent to us so we can review it? Cause I don't have a copy of it. You can't just keep it all to yourself.
Yeah, really.
You can make a lot, right?
Yeah, I think some, you know, if we had, if this board had access to these documents prior to the meeting, it'd probably go a lot quicker.
Agreed.
Agreed.
But I, I don't know, I'm not gonna point a finger. Maybe I should do it, but I got Brian.
Well, but let's, let's figure out, I mean, there's, there's a way we could do this, so we could post them for everyone to have access to, so.
All right.
The idea is to use SharePoint for this purpose, so, the way we should be using it.
Correct.
It's hard. So, anyway, I will forward the document to everyone.
Okay. All right, so there are no changes to the agenda with that, you were just querying whether they had the report?
We are, we're good to go.
Yep. Okay, anybody got any other additions or changes on this thing? Otherwise, I'll accept the motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Okay, Dave? Makes a motion, John does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so the law enforcement report is up next, and we're just getting incoming mail. We'll follow along here. Brian, you got it up there?
Deputy Cole Thompson, the sheriff's office. Uh, this month, we had eighty-one calls for service. Uh, there were really no notable calls. Um, four of the calls came from traffic complaints. Uh, eleven, eleven calls were deputies attempting warrants, and then we had six firework-related calls, none of those being on the Fourth of July, cause I worked in it, so. No issues there, but.
Right, that's a good thing.
Yeah. Um, that's pretty much it for that, uh, as far as calls, any questions on the calls for service?
Yeah, so the fireworks calls, there were no injuries with any of those, or they were more complaints, or what?
I don't know of any injuries.
We didn't have any rescue calls for fireworks.
Potentially the house in Round Hill was victim to fireworks, but...
These six calls were complaints?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't know the breakdown, what time they were called in at, or anything like that, I would assume that they were after eleven o'clock on certain nights. I think some of them were also due to the garbage left behind from the fireworks.
Yeah, so that was, that was one of the issues that I brought up, because I did get a question from a resident about that topic, because, uh, neighbors were, did a, did a fireworks display and left a huge mess in the neighbor's yard, and they didn't go clean it up, so. Um, I haven't published anything about that, as a reminder for residents to say, hey, you know, go take care of this. Right, so, I basically told the residents, it's like, if there's an issue, file complaint, right? And reach out to the deputies to, to do something formally, cause right now the city can't, doesn't really have a mechanism, correct?
Well, I believe...
The nuisance ordinance.
Yeah, I believe Lucas sent out an email stating that the nuisance ordinance could also cover that, but there is an infraction side of it, if it's just a little bit of littering, if it's more than, I believe, one cubic foot of trash, um, then it's actually a misdemeanor, so, that's left behind, so it just depends. But if it's also on their property, we can't make them clean up their property, that'd be more of a city ordinance, so.
This is the debris that comes, they shoot them off on their property and all, spray it on the neighbor's yard.
I was just thinking about that, because is that something, how do we get the, raise awareness of this, that was my question around this.
Kind of after the fact, and if it's one, if it's a single person, I don't know that
merits time.
Yeah, but, I mean, if it was a consistent problem in the city, then you, but you'd wanna do it in...
I'm thinking next year we should probably put something...
I had in the course happening, I put something on there.
You know, we can put it in for next year, but kind of...
Right.
I'd say next year we put something in the, on the Facebook page, to just to let, uh, raise awareness.
Well, and I don't know, maybe you guys can create something in addition to the, your fireworks ordinance already, that clean up, if you don't clean up, there's a citation for that or fine for that.
Well, you have the nuisance ordinance.
Right.
We could probably fall back on that if we had to.
Right.
But I think it'd be good for next year to just say, hey, here's the policy on the fireworks, remember the hours, but then clean up after yourself.
Well, I think that, that will hold true when we get to New Year's, you know, just to put the reminder in there, don't forget to clean up after you have your fire.
Right, right, yep.
Just a...
Question I had for you was, are you noticing any more, are people slowing down a little bit more now by the school going north, or are we still seeing rolling?
No, it's, it's, it's an ongoing battle that I think will never end, it's, uh, forty-three miles an hour seems to be the average in the twenty-five zone, so.
See, I thought maybe now with some citations being issued over the span of time, that there would be less of them, but...
It's, it's really not curbing anybody from, I mean, the, the people that have lived here forever, I think it is, but there's so much traffic from residents that are not from here, or non-residents, I should say, so.
Yeah, I got you.
Uh, especially with the construction companies, stuff like that, I mean, they're coming in and out at, well, about forty-three miles an hour is pretty much the average speed I see, so.
How about construction vehicles going in and out of Lost River? Are they law abiding on the speed and trucks and all that, or?
Yeah, we had our truck reg out here for a while too, that was a little bit earlier, or the later part of spring. Um, and they were waiting trucks and stuff, so I think that all that's helped, but I have seen some trucks come up and down Wall, and there is no signage there restricting weight or anything like that.
Nope, I know, there isn't. I've seen them too in the morning, early morning, I'll see them go running out there.
And I've discussed that with Adam and Ben too, I mean, that's a city thing, but the only way we can enforce action on anybody is if it's posted. It's posted.
Posted, yep.
Um, and even if it's no through truck traffic, they can, because they have business on that road. So, unless there's a weight restriction for that road, there's nothing we can really enforce.
Yeah, and when we talked about this last summer too, but that'll be more of us trying to figure out, what is the weight that that road can maintain? That's what we should post, but, yeah.
But they're not speeding down that road, are they?
I mean, I don't...
Do we need a speeding sign, I mean, do we need like a twenty-five mile an hour sign, or?
Yeah, there is a sign there already.
Is, cause is that an issue, speed?
On Wall, I, I haven't seen anybody really over about thirty-something, you know, I mean, not that that's not speeding, but, you know, I'd be more concerned if those trucks are going down there at forty miles an hour.
Yeah, I don't think I've seen them that fast, but I know they're going over twenty-five.
Right. Um, the only other order of business I have on our end is the, uh, we finally got word back on the ATV classes. Um, they can do July twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh, um, or August eighth, ninth, or tenth, and...
I visited with Cory, and those eights are too soon. We need something later than that, preferably in September.
Well, back in May, we were looking at doing June, so I mean, that was...
Well, but that was in May, I mean, now it's the July, and we can't do a class the end of, we wouldn't have time to get it filled.
Okay.
How are you needing to have it filled?
Well, if it's a four-hour classroom only, they can have unlimited people. Um, if it's four-hour practical, then they can only have eight students.
That's the one we want, the practical, the driving class.
How many?
Eight.
Why couldn't we get eight?
You could fill it.
My neighborhood could take eight.
Well, then we'd have to have more than one class, because then, yes, certainly we're gonna fill it eight easily, but we're gonna need more than one.
And you just get a signup sheet after that, start putting it in the orders happening.
Well, on August eighth is the same day that we will be doing Night to Unite, and maybe you can incorporate it into that earlier in the day, I don't know what times he gave Jesse um, for the class, but...
I suppose that's something.
He didn't give me any times at all.
I'm assuming they'd be in the evening, but...
So, is it two days, is it eighth and ninth?
To be honest with you, I don't know, I think it's just one day, but those are the dates that choose from, based on, but it's a four-hour class.
Or is it, can we do two classes in that day? I mean,
Right.
You know, eight kids is not a lot of kids.
I agree, yeah.
It's a starting point, Sharon.
Or if you guys did the unlimited classroom only first, and saw how many people you got there, um, you could potentially then do the practical a month later, or whatever, I don't know.
Dumb question, what kind of value do you give one versus the other?
I have not attended either of these, so I...
So, you're not surprised by ATV?
Right.
I think you have to do both, John.
You have to do both?
I think you have to do both, I think you have to...
But it's through the North Dakota Parks and Rec, so I would assume that they put on a pretty good class.
I would think the online one, the practice, the classroom part is the practical one you can do online, and it has to be done before you do the practical one. Cause there's an online part, and then that's the second part of it. Because when I looked it up for my son to take it, you can do all the stuff online and get the certificate, but it's not the same, you, that practical one is the important one. You know, the driving side.
I wish I had more information. In August, we're gonna miss this, sorry.
Uh, I mean, I mean, likely, I mean, you have Fall, obviously, that people are still riding, but I think the sooner you can have a class, the more beneficial it's gonna be.
Do you want to queue for August?
Yeah.
Try and get up close.
I'd say throw something out there. Uh, try to put something out there, pick a date, get a time, put it in orders happenings and...
Jesse...
With websites.
I mean, that's...
Yeah.
But if they're gonna, you're gonna need, you're gonna need to...
If you do a class and forty people want to join, you'll know how many classes to do for next year, like we have for this.
Right. Jesse will be down here a little bit later this evening too, he was at a training. Um, once he's down here, I'll, I can talk to him a little bit more above him.
Did we talk to him?
What the conversation was.
Because if we're gonna do it, I'd rather do two of them than just do one.
Yeah, he should be here before the meeting's over.
So, let's table this till...
Yeah, let's do that, we've...
Okay.
So, we won't publish anything soon.
Maybe, I don't know, let's talk to him.
Who will he publish?
No, I didn't. Not that I'm aware of, but, okay, I've been off all weekend, so I just came on about a half hour before I got here, so.
I just gotta ask to check my camera footage.
Okay.
Because AJ's didn't show anything going out that way, so it must've come by.
Okay.
My friend would've picked up the road.
Okay.
Supposedly that's just Saturday.
On Saturday?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'll look into that too, see if there's a call for it. I think that's a big part to, I mean, add in there, it's, a lot of people haven't been reporting things. Um, I got wind through the grapevine about some battery thefts out of campers and some other attempted thefts, but none of that was reported to us, so it's really hard for us to be proactive on something that we don't know was happening, so.
Well, it's funny, she said, we made a call to the highway patrol. It's like, why did we, I said, we have deputies in town.
Right.
I mean, you guys drive through, so.
Yes.
Still, no.
Okay.
But yeah, people should get ahold of you guys, so that there's paper trail with this stuff.
Right. Yeah, if we don't hear about it, it didn't happen.
Yeah, it didn't happen, right.
Right, doesn't get documented, it didn't happen, so.
So, we get that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Uh, just quickly, um, Sharon is working diligently on reincarnating Bean Days. I was on the original board of Bean Days back in the early eighties, and we sus, the board at that time suggested that we suspend violations for overnight parking. Uh, is that something that this board should consider? Uh, we relaxed that for that weekend, uh, as opposed to getting in their car and driving north or south. Perhaps you could think about that for the next meeting?
Yes, that's a good suggestion. Can you please put that on our agenda for the next meeting? So that we can, we can talk about that, because I think it will tie into some upcoming decisions on Bean Days as well.
I agree.
And, and in addition, you know, it would be nice if, I guess I won't say it would be nice, I will say, with Bean Days coming up the third weekend in August, I'm sure that the sheriff's department will be able to assist, I'm, I'm sure that uh, we're going to need maybe extra deputies that night, or we're going to need
Yeah.
different kinds of, you know, you're, we're gonna need you to be a little bit more vigilant, vigilant. There'll be more people in town that whole Friday night and Saturday, and so, to bring that up so that you can staff accordingly.
And they'll have a street dance the Saturday night.
It's gonna be the third weekend in August, as I said?
Eighteenth and nineteenth.
So, Friday night, there'll be a trap shoot and trying to get a, I'm gonna be going.
At the park over here.
Well, with, uh, I, I mean, I, with alcohol being served, anybody in the county is actually required to have X amount of deputies present, um, for security, but then usually our reserve unit for events like that will be able to get four or five others to come that do it, because they enjoy doing it and they do it for free.
Yeah, and that's something that we're not really familiar with, what the regulations are from the county side on what the need, how many law enforcement people do you need when you have a street dance? I could say that I would ask you to share that information with us, so we're aware.
Who should I have? I could have Sergeant Hall in contact, should I have him contact you, Sharon?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And this way we can be knowledgeable.
Yeah, that's fine. You might want to just double check with Kelly too, to see if he's contacted, so you guys don't double up. Yeah. Okay. Anybody got any other questions? All right, thank you for the report, sir.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Lucas, I guess that gets to you then.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, the first item I have is Lakeview Heights Second Edition, and we'll start with the rezone. The planning commission approved the rezone, uh, at their June twenty-seventh meeting, and...
Which document is this, what this did?
I didn't send it, cause I thought you had it from the last time, so we had a public hearing on this.
It was from the nineteenth meeting?
We had a public hearing on this June thirteenth. And all that's planned, so do you, June nineteenth?
I did get that, yeah. So, this, this is the final plot, right, right.
So, it's this.
So, the lot for the school stays as, um, A, and then the lots to the, to the west will be neighborhood commercial.
Commercial, yep.
And we discussed the last meeting quite a bit, and provided direction to the planning of the zone, and we were just talking with them and letting them go through the process.
Russell, you didn't have anything more to? Since we had the meeting, or since you guys had your meeting, there's nothing that's come to your attention since?
No, we haven't thrown any of the roadblocks in.
I didn't say that, I just said, to our attention, come on, man. So, I mean, it is how it is.
So, yeah, um, for the, for the rezon, this will be the, the first reading of it, cause it's an ordinance, then first reading, then we'll have second, reading at your next meeting.
All right, so does anybody got any more questions on the rezon?
Brian, Sharon?
Can you make a motion to approve?
I'll set us up.
Okay, John makes a motion, and, uh, Dave does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, rezon is approved. Next up.
Mr. Mayor, the next item we have is Lakeview Heights Second Edition Preliminary Platte. Um, once again, this was approved at the, um, Planning and Zonings, June twenty-seventh meeting. And I, like I said, it was discussed, you had your, your public hearing on June thirteenth, I think you discussed a little bit then, and then you...
This is rezon. This is the plat.
Yep. You guys got any questions on the, again, there's... It looked good to me. Okay? John does a motion to approve, Dave does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Preliminary plat is done, all right.
So now, so now to proceed, you guys will do your final plat, because there's no changes. Um, we'll have to put that in paper, but I can do that tomorrow, and it can be in by Wednesday, and then it'll be two weeks for that to be, but Perry needs to get that information, so send it to him, and then he'll send us the, the plat for review, but if there's no changes, then it'll just say final plat.
But it has to go through planning and zoning.
Yep, yep, and then city council.
Next week?
No, it has to be in paper for two weeks.
Also the final?
Yep, yep.
That's when the checklist says to be complete, that's what's the talk.
And then, um, as I told Nate earlier today, um, I have been working on the developer's agreement for that one, for that, the developer's agreement. So, that is in the works. Um, I'll probably send, probably send it to the city council for review, to see if you guys have any additions that you want to it, and then we can discuss that at your next meeting, so that'll be before final plat approval.
Can I address the council quickly, or not?
About the plat?
Yeah.
Sure, sure, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to go through, talk about a few things that came up at planning.
Thank you, Nate Volmuth with Pace's Lodging. Um, so we had a lengthy discussion about the checklist, so I just wanted to make sure that you're clear in what we're providing, and, and since Russ is here, he'll be clear too, and if there's any questions, I'd appreciate we talk about it tonight.
I'm pulling up the developer's agreement, is that the document? No?
No, that's different, it's the checklist.
Okay.
Um...
Do any of you have the checklist? I have one of them.
And maybe the the city engineer might be able to city engineer might be able to, um, shed some light on it also too, so. Um, so I think some of the biggest confusion possibly was, since this is a large commercial development, not a single-family development, um, lots, drainage, streets aren't planned at this time, like the grading of it, because um, we're not putting those things in right now, and, and in residential development, all that happens right away, but in this type of development, that doesn't happen. Um, so, when you go through the checklist, it asks for a lot, some of these things are, seem to be more um, geared towards single-family developments, like drainage plans and mailbox plans and, um, grading and final drainage of all streets and lots, things like that. So, I just wanted to be, I just wanted to make sure that we talked about it, because we're, we've prepared it, we've prepared an amenities plan, is what we do in Fargo, West Fargo, for our commercial development, so it basically states, um, size of the right of ways, um, that will comply, comply with city engineers' requests for size of streets, um, street lighting at appropriate intervals, things of that nature, signage, but it's not on, it's not in a blueprint fashion right now, it's in text, text form essentially, so. I just want to make sh, make sure that you understood that, and that if Russ had any other questions, because we talked about it for quite a while, and there's differences in these types of plots, so. I don't know if city engineer is, is that's your understanding also, is that we're not gonna provide a, a massive grading plan on this commercial, because until it develops, you don't know where the water's gonna go, so. We've essentially, and I sent Lucas and Perry and Kent, um, the amenities plan, the draft that I, um, I sent that earlier today, so they probably haven't, um, dug into it much yet, but it's out there for review, um, and it basically spells out kind of what our agreement is between the developer and the city. More, more specific things, and then Lucas is preparing a developer's agreement also, so, I haven't reviewed that yet, though, so. So, I don't know if there's any discussion, I just would appreciate if there was, just so that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, we, I can see where some of this stuff too, is like you said, is for residential, this, this checklist, cause that's how we prepared it, so I know some of this may not apply, and I think that would be a discretionary thing. Perry, you'd understand what will apply and what will not apply for this.
Yeah, and I, I did get it. Dave sent me, uh, amenities, uh, today, this list here, and I just, uh, gave Dave one a copy of it for his review, cause he didn't have one yet.
Right.
But I got one, and I give Russ one, so we can take a look at that. I didn't have no time today to do that, but, uh, I got that from Dave.
Okay.
So, I'll go through that tomorrow, and I'll give Dave the call, and, and so we can keep the process going.
Right, I was gonna say, do that, and then keep our engineers in the loop, then do so we're all on the same page. So, I ain't been getting lost here, right?
You know, I think what would be helpful going forward, it would be to create a checklist that's specific to commercial, and have one specific, cause this one is to residential, and so, as we go through this, we can see here, this belongs here, that, and just take out and create a separate checklist for the commercial side.
So, it'd make more sense.
We might find that, we might want one for commercial, and then we want, might want one for industrial, because that's called under a different plan also.
Correct, and maybe we do, and then we can just create one, so that as you're talking to a developer in any future situation we have, we can give them the appropriate...
Right. We just come up with this...
It'd make life easier for all of us.
This checklist hasn't been around all that long, so
Exactly.
We're working on, work in progress, you could say.
Russell, you had a question?
Yeah, not a question, just, what if, uh, some of these things are not gonna be able to be reviewed until they go to permit? They start going to permit, then the engineers are gonna have to be involved before the permit is granted.
Right.
Because, because right, right now, all, all their, all they have is a big canvas out there, and and the picture they show of where the school's going is just, uh, they're just putting all the puzzle pieces in place to see if they fit, that may not be how it comes out.
Right.
Right. Puzzle pieces might change.
Puzzle pieces might change.
Right. So, you guys have any questions?
Nope.
So, yeah, we...
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you letting us talk about that. Okay? All right, Lucas, you've got some more on your plate here, it looks like.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, the next item is the variance ordinance and this one, I believe I did send Councilman Schmidt.
Which one? This one?
Ordinance.
Yep, that's the one. So you guys, the council did the first reading on June nineteenth, your June nineteenth meeting, so this would just be your second reading of the ordinance change and all this is doing is. Kind of revising the process of how variances are done, have it go to planning first and then go in front of city council.
Yep.
So then the city council would make the ultimate decision.
Replacing board of adjustment because we aren't using that.
Yep.
Right now it's planning commission.
So yeah, tonight would just be your second reading.
Anybody got any questions on it or you've already gone through this? I'll accept a motion from someone who wrote this. Brian, Sharon does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved. All right, next one.
Mr. Mayor, the next one is our wonderful fireworks ordinance that keeps getting brought up. And I changed it again from what this is because I'm not comfortable with, because there's a penalty involved with the city council just basically setting a penalty. And the ordinances under your main penalty ordinance, it says that it has to be set within the ordinances if it's different than just an infraction. So what I did is I just put a minimum in there. A minimum infraction. So I have that here. You guys let me know what you think and then I'll read you the, your main, oh, thanks.
So we will have another schedule or resolution where we would approve that?
And that's, I don't think the, the city council should do it by resolution because then you can't see, a resident cannot see what the penalty is. And then officers don't know because then who's preparing the resolution? Where does it sit? Is the officer going to come into the?
We can do that with the waters.
Yeah, then it's fine, but if it's.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, and so because it's just fireworks too, it's one of those things where if someone is violating the chapter, police officer goes and says, okay, you're in violation of city ordinance, you do it again, I can give you an infraction and it's going to be seventy five dollar fine. So that's how I, I have it set up now. You can pick if you want the fee.
Well, this is modified from what's on here.
Yeah, I did it after. I did it later today, so I didn't send it.
Seventy five dollar fine, okay.
Which, like I said, it's totally up to the council. The other way that it's typically done is it just says, like your section one oh two eleven just says up to a thousand dollars and that's at the discretion of the municipal judge.
Yes, and that's why we wanted to put a fee in there. I remember that conversation.
And so this one, it just, the officer knows, he goes up to some kid who's violating the chapter, whoever's violating the chapter and says, we're in, you're in violation of this, stop if you don't. Here's what can happen.
Lucas, did we talk about it being fifty dollars as a minimum?
It was fifty, it was a hundred, so I just split the middle and went seventy five. So it's, it can be changed too.
I think a hundred dollars is correct. You guys are going to spend time and money.
Agreed, yeah.
If you're anything less than a hundred dollars, then you're out of money.
That's what a lot of the other ones I saw in the state were, so.
Yeah, it's totally up to you guys, your city council. I just, I just think it's more beneficial to have it in the ordinances so the officers can see it and they're not trying to call you up and say, what's your, what's the violation?
Your general processes, you go out there, you basically warn them, can you please stop doing that, blah, blah, blah. Now if somebody called again, you're coming back.
See, your car probably went to like two hundred.
Oof, yeah.
You know, calls, only one citation issued. It's because everybody stopped and they told them to stop, so. It wasn't an issue of yours either, to be honest with you, whatever it was and everything is done before we're going across.
I'm okay kicking it up to a hundred bucks.
I'm okay.
I will, we adjust the penalty to a hundred and use the language that Lucas is defending.
Okay, so Dave makes a motion with the adjustments. You got that? Okay, John does a second.
It's a hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars. Anybody got any other discussion or, okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we will move along. So next you can weigh that in front of a hundred bucks. Don't do that again, right? That's right.
So yeah, for, for that ordinance, we'll do it again. Second reading will be at your next meeting and then that'll be a done deal.
Thank you, sir.
So then my last item is brief. It's just, I wanted to get you guys kind of an idea. I don't know if you guys have ever really looked at our developer agreements, so I figured I'd give you a draft to look at. And I made a mistake. I sent the mayor the wrong one.
I was gonna say it had West Fargo all over it.
Yeah, I made a mistake. That's my bad.
I sent it to you guys, so it's.
I'm showing you the current one with horse.
Yeah, you got it and I got it, but nobody else did.
Hard copies. Councilman found it.
I love hard copies, so I count the balance days. He hates them, but I love them.
I don't like to stop anyone reading these ahead of time.
I like sitting on my deck in the morning and reading them over coffee.
Yeah, like I said, this is, it's just a draft and I, I want to have you guys see it so then you can kind of get an idea of what's going on with these developer agreements and then we can make additions to it or take stuff away. And these can be specialized to the development, or they will be specialized to the development, but.
This is kind of what we did with Jack too. We went through this.
Yep, with Lost River.
Yep.
And so, yeah, and speaking of that, we'll have to do an addendum to that because he's including Lost River second and third, so I've been working on that addendum for that agreement as well.
So we have time to review this correctly, Lucas?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not something, it's just, it's one of those things where you probably want to have it before the final plat gets recorded.
Right, exactly.
And so this will be.
We do want to have a more specific template that we know is not, we don't have to go through a long process every time. We want to have something that's pretty specific for our city and then there's minute changes that are specific to the development, right?
Yeah, like changing a provision in there somewhere like that.
Or the parts, in this one, it just says they give a dollar off. Isn't that more of a?
Because that's, yep, and that's what they agreed to, so that's why it was.
Right, in this instance, it is what they agreed to.
The intention is this is a template that's to be used, right?
Right.
Now, would planning and zoning own this? In terms of?
No, 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 it's somebody else.
Well.
I don't know what that, I don't want you to hear.
No, we go through it.
Well, so we established the ground rules for working with the developer in the development before planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning has seen this. I sent you guys.
They get feedback, but it's.
Why would we set some of the terms in here before planning and zoning?
Yeah, that's a good question. Say that one more time.
Why would we see this before planning and zoning has said, here are the terms that we have agreed to with the developer in before, this should not, if developers making a proposal, planning and zoning would work out the details of, because this is a template.
I don't know why we have to have so many details. That's my point is that this should be a pretty defined template.
And honestly, this one's just so you guys can kind of look at it. Otherwise, this is me that does this, not necessarily. I pick up on these things at the meetings and then I put them in there. So when planning and zoning talks about putting, making streetlights incorporated in there, I took that from their meeting and there's a streetlight provision in there.
Okay, so there's a streetlight provision.
Yep.
And developer says, okay, we want something slightly different from what's here, okay? Is that something that is agreed to by planning and zoning or approved by planning and zoning before it comes to the council? Why would we see that and then for us to approve the agreement before planning and zoning has approved it? Or the park district, right? Same thing with park district. The park district is in here. I would not assume the council should not do anything with that until park district has approved that.
Is this the right way to say park zone or park board and planning and zoning do not police the developer's agreement? That still relies on.
City.
City and attorney to get it done. It's a legal part of it, is that?
Yeah, this is like, this is my baby basically, yeah.
They address that what they present to you and then the problems that they present, because if they can't perform to exactly the way that that's written, if they can't perform to that, then they bring that up to you and then you make amendments or change it as needed.
And the, the planning commission has seen this.
How the park is going to work, where's planning and zoning in the mix?
Because that's where your checklist is. The checklist says that the developer has to meet with the park and have an agreement and that's what this agreement says.
So the, so my point is, I talked to the park district and say, what have you, what agreement do you have for this one? For instance, for this development, it was forty thousand dollars. For Lakeview Heights, they're working on a users agreement that they're going to have with the school. And that's what they have agreed to. So I talked to them and said, okay, what do you guys want?
It's a five acre park with all kinds of amenities, so it's different.
Right, I get it. So that's why this is a template and it will be different for this development versus any other development. But when that is those details, who hammers out those details? Is it him and the developer?
Mostly.
Okay, all right, okay.
Well, if there's something that comes up, they.
I just wanted to make sure that planning and zoning is in this mix somewhere. That was my point, I.
One of, one of the things that doesn't happen is, is you can't have a final plat approved. If checklist items like park board haven't signed off. In other words, in other words. But this is the legal agreement between, between your board and the development because we found we didn't have, we've had some previous developments in which we have no written agreements. And so this is, this is to have a legal agreement of what's going to be done and you guys direct the hammer over here to take care of it.
Wow, the hammer.
That's on the record, right?
Mr. Mayor is saying this, I'm going to open the can. I'm probably going to get in big trouble for it, but I think at the end of the day, it probably has to be addressed. In this particular development agreement, it lists in here masters construction. We heard the comments from the development in here earlier tonight. I think we're gonna, and I don't know if there's any way, shape or form, but I think we're going to have some due diligence to find out their previous development. Did they fulfill the contract previously in River Oaks? Do they have any liability whatsoever? Because I'm not going to sit idle and let them continue doing work in our town if that was the case. You know, we were, we have, we have responsibility to look at that and I think sooner than later, we need to do that.
Well, and John, I think that while I agree with you, I think we also have to consider if they've done any work in between the time that they did River Oaks and present day as well.
In town, Eric, yeah.
In town and consider what, consider how those developments went as well, because I think all of that would play into the fact. I mean, certainly when it comes to bidding the contract and making the award, at that point in time, that would be where the contractor would then be decided. Right, when that contract's awarded, do we award it to and if it's masters and if we have a reason not to, then that's the point in time.
Well, you know.
Right.
Mr. Adelman did his own infrastructure.
Correct.
And I assume that's kind of going to be the same way. Wasn't he talking about that?
In this agreement though, it says that the engineer reviews all work and so the engineer would have to approve and sign off on the work that's done.
No, I get that part.
It was implied that they would be doing the work themselves.
Exactly, so. And I know masters, I don't believe had anything to do with his development up north, correct?
No, not from what I've seen in the records.
I don't think so either.
No, they didn't.
If he's hiring them, we, he's awarded, we're not.
Right.
He's, they're paying the bill, yeah.
Right.
But the only thing, the only thing we have at that point is in the engineer approving the work they do.
We would have to have a much more active role in this subdivision than we did in, in Adelman, since we just had come on at that time and it was already had been pretty much completed, so yes.
That's part of what this is all about too, is just making sure we cross the Ts and dot the Is. Okay?
Well, this board wants to do it. I mean, we've worked really hard to do things the right way and none of this board was here when that development went in.
No, but we have to deal with it.
But we're the ones picking up the pieces to it. So I don't know if there's any opportunity, but I would like to have our attorney, I don't know if Vance has any information, dig through it, dig through quickly to see what exactly the history is behind this.
And do what exactly? I guess I don't know.
Well, they're saying that there were specials painted on it and there was work not done.
Are we talking about Chesnut now?
Yes.
Yeah, you switched gears. We're talking about Chesnut, River Oaks.
Sorry.
Yeah, I know.
I apologize. You're supposed to have the same tree that I do.
He's talking about, okay, what John's talking about, you know, there's these covenants they were talking about and it's like, yeah.
Yeah, that's twenty years ago, so I don't, it's a whole new council, it's a whole new game.
It's not like the covenant so much as going through the project file and making sure what was, was everything complete?
And I think we've done that.
North Dakota Century Code twenty eight dash something says after ten years, ten years after, so it's, it's a moot point to try to even.
It just questions it per ask that I want to be able to give the appropriate answer back to.
Well, I know our office won't have that, maybe, because you said we were. I don't know if we have that file. I don't know if we keep our files that long.
Anyway, we'll just, yeah, let's decide at this point right now. I know, I know, but let's try and stay on topic here for a little bit.
Yeah, so this is basically just so you guys can see what a developer's agreement looks like.
I see, I sat with you guys when we did this one with Jack, going through that thing, so I kind of had an idea what you were, were going through here.
Yeah, his is different. His is an improvement agreement, so it basically lays that out. So yes, it is a fluid document that changes per development.
Not dramatically though, right?
No.
Just pieces, small pieces of it.
I think they're put in and taken out depending on how this flavor is.
I know, but I would hope that the, the general outline of this document does not change dramatically per development.
Russell, what do you got?
Okay, we have a. A checklist for subdivisions because a couple of years ago, I gave John Shockley a thumb drive with checklist for subdivisions and I wanted him to look at it, fix it and approve it. And I suggest that you also need a checklist for developer's agreements.
Should all be great.
Just, the reason you have a checklist is so that you can go down, yeah, doesn't apply here, doesn't, yeah, doesn't apply here, initial it off, applies here, applies here, doesn't apply here, so that when you actually go to make the agreement, you're not basing it on memory of what maybe we should have in it. The other thing about the checklist is checklist is totally fluid from the standpoint of. Uh, we haven't learned everything yet.
No.
Know that.
Yep. True. All right, anybody got anything else here on the developer's agreement? Again, this is, this is for our information.
So there's nothing to approve at this point.
Just a preview. Okay, with that, we'll move on to interstate then.
All right, Mr. Mayor and Council. I want to bring up my memo, Brian.
Which one?
Today's date, July.
Right there, up.
Oh, here? No, sorry, here. Is that it?
That's the one. All right, we'll start at the top. Number one, the two thousand seventeen street improvement projects. The protest period continues. As you know, we did have a public information meeting earlier tonight. And the one thing on the truck route, John, we had talked a couple of weeks ago or months, meetings ago about you having some conversations with some of the business owners on the east end of town. Have you got anywhere on that? No? Okay. So that's where that's at. Water meter replacer project, really nothing new to report. That's kind of, we're trying to kick around how we're going to fund that kind of a thing.
Yeah, I had one conversation with Vance, so we can just give you a quick update on that. Vance and I met to talk about that and right now we're considering with funds that we have in city as well as potential sales and use tax revenue that we would use to fund this project. Basically without assessing, full assessment. So that is, that is the direction we're headed right now. Not being approved at this point, but that's where we're headed.
How much was that again, Brian?
I was. You gonna make it?
You choked up, Vance?
I hope so. Very emotional.
I want to say the last, the last bid that we came in was around. Two twenty-three?
It sounds right.
Yeah, two hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Yeah, because I pared it down a little bit.
We can tweak that though.
Oh, yeah.
And if we could possibly save a little bit of money here and there, like for example, one of the things we're contemplating is, is contracting with Castro Water to do the meter reading and rather than us buy the equipment or the reader equipment and software and so forth. So that would save some money in the project, so we're, we're looking at ways we can cut, reduce that project size, so keep, keep it under two hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, that would save some money in the project, so we're, we're looking at ways we can cut, reduce that project size, so keep, keep it under two hundred thousand dollars.
They've already got all the equipment, they've just got a spreadsheet.
All, all we'd have to do, right, that's all we'd have to do is just, they give us a spreadsheet on a monthly basis and we go in and, and import it and-
Path of least resistance.
That's the route I'd like to see, really.
Yep. So we have moved the needle a little bit on this project, uh, nothing yet. Let, let's try and take a, make a goal of have this funding proposal in place for August. Vance, I'm looking at you to see if it's possible that we could pull that off. Could we have something ready to say for the council to approve the next meeting, or the next?
What do you want them to approve, I guess?
Well, i- i- is that really the next step? Because we got the engineering assessment.
You got the engineering report, you would need to go out and we would probably do plans and specs to procure the equipment. But you, if you have a way of funding it, then we need to go out and bid it.
Okay, so that, that's really the next step. If we, if we could say we would fund this internally with our, our own funds, we can-
If you're comfortable with that, then you direct us at your next meeting to proceed with.
I'd look into not borrowing any more money.
Yeah.
I think we can do it internally.
Sure.
So what's the difference if it costs twenty thousand dollars more versus if it costs five to ten grand a year for them to read it? I mean, if it, if it takes more years for us to pay the other twenty grand by when we read it ourselves and make the money instead of paying another outside firm to do?
Because it's another thing we have to do.
You drive the streets one time, which we do every month, we go to-
But again, this is a whole discussion of how much do we keep piling on you guys, how much all that kinda stuff?
If it is, say it's ten grand a year and it's only twenty grand more to have software, like-
Well, maybe, maybe after we do it a couple of times, maybe we bring it back, but if you start-
It's, it's not saying we have to stay that way forever.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying if it, if the initial cost is this versus that.
But, yeah, I don't think we're here to debate what things we would or would not include in that, but it's a good point, we can have that discussion.
Maybe it's worth you two talking to Real Water and seeing if, what they would be, I don't know, have we seen a proposal from them?
I don't know how much that they have set it with contract, but for the purposes of moving this project ahead, do we need to basically just have a motion, or I mean, I guess the council, would you like to see this funding proposal before we direct engineers to move ahead?
Yes, yes, please, yes, please.
So, the motion is to request the engineers to, no, no, that's-
Brian to finalize.
They've got everything, just funding, just funding, that's all we need to do. So if we, Vance and I will come back the next meeting with a funding proposal for us to review. And if we're comfortable with that funding proposal, then we will direct the engineers to go ahead and proceed with the procurement and-
Right, that's what we need to do.
Yep, make sure we can fund it.
So, okay, Vance and I will take that action, Adam.
Okay.
Here. Uh, lining project, uh, work will continue on lift station number three next week. Contractor has requ, has basically said he isn't gonna meet the July first completion. I have to get some more information from him and get an updated schedule with how long he thinks it's gonna actually take him, so and what some of his problems were. So I'll get on that and have that for you at the next council meeting. Uh, the twenty, I believe it's twenty-sixth is when they will be back lining, uh, lift station number three along Park and Cheyenne. Uh, they'll be in next week to prep it for that work, so.
So, it's just the, it's just the manhole?
Lift station lining.
The lift station lining, or, oh, that was the change order essentially that we-
There's some of that that is still building work, yeah, the epoxy coating on it.
So that's, the street work and everything that impacts residents is all completed?
I shouldn't say, nope, it's not. They're still debating on how they're gonna bypass the park lift station. There might be some intermittent street closure along there for some bypass pumping, but I'll get an updated idea from them and I'll make sure to give you some heads up on that, Brian, too.
What about the shop? We haven't really made a decision about what-
No, I, I'm working on getting quotes for that. Another guy stopped by the office last week and dropped off some stuff, so I'm gonna see about getting a quote from him, so.
Are, is, is that part of this improvement, or is it, are we handling that as a separate thing?
Well, the, the way the health department made it sound is that the money's there if we wanna do it as part of this job. So, we just need to get, I need to get the quotes back to you to see what the additional-
Okay, so it, it really is a change order to this?
It would be a change order to this, yes.
Okay. But it needs to be done?
Yeah, it is, yeah, we, we saw the pictures at the-
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I saw.
Remember the pictures, I should say. Okay, the water looping project, work continues this week along Wall Avenue and Conner Road seventeen. They're anticipating on Wednesday, they're gonna do some tie-in work by the softball dive and then up by the elementary school. And they figure within, uh, maybe by the middle of next week, middle of then and next week, they'll have the stuff along seventeen done and tied in, so.
So move it in the next two weeks?
Yep, and then we go to Wall.
So how long will it be before this project's complete?
Uh, they would, I would say probably another three to four weeks. Uh, I would say middle of August is probably our best, they, they think, they requested on August thirty-first completion, but that would be for absolutely everything, so. The, um, wild card is definitely Wall Avenue, what, what shows up there for existing conditions, so.
That one's gonna be our nightmare. We're, we're gonna get in there and there's gonna be problems.
I like your optimism.
Stay positive here, man.
Yeah.
Happy thoughts.
I'm gonna shut off my phone for the next four weeks, I can see that right now.
Well, we know where you live after the first meeting. We told everyone where you live, so.
We'll find you.
What do they do that for?
Alright, um, I'll skip over the SSL, Damon will talk about that. Um, the Adelman drainage, I talked to Jeff with Glacier, he plans on starting that work towards the end of the month. Lost River.
End in July?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Lost River, the storm sewer's complete, the contractor's now working on dirt work, uh, they plan on doing the agri base and curb and gutter yet this week. Uh, nothing new to-
Are they pretty much right on?
They're ahead of schedule, I think.
They're ahead?
I think they're ahead of schedule now.
There hasn't been enough rain days?
Right.
Yeah, if it doesn't rain, but I hope it does.
I would wish, yeah, it's off the guy.
So right now, they're tracking ahead of schedule?
They appear to be, yeah. They could, uh, take people away and then lose their momentum, but right now, it seems to be pretty much on track.
Have there been any no truck complaints along Wall or eighty-first Street, eighty-first Street, yeah?
No, just the residents on the corner of Thuian Wall.
There's a few trucks that are still coming that way.
Apparently the county is permitting the oversized loads to, that's their directed route with the heavy, with the oversized semis and stuff, that's what I've been told at least, so.
Okay.
That's kinda what it is, but a lot of that traffic is going to River's Edge and the majority always coming, for Lost River's coming down the seventy-sixth.
Every time I drive down, drive by that, I just, it's just a haze, that-
Yeah, it's very dusty, very dusty.
So is that something that the city should be putting water out there on a fairly regular basis, or who's, I mean, aren't we responsible for that?
No, not our own.
There is a combination-
Destroy it and we take it.
I thought we were gonna put dust control down there.
Yeah, you got the approval to do that and I had it bladed, but if you could have- The next morning he come out there and it was pure washboarded, so he didn't, we gotta reschedule the blade at the exact same day, because he bladed it, the next morning he come out there two late down and it was so washboarded, he wouldn't, because he knew if he bladed it right behind it, he'd lose it. It's just there's so much truck traffic, truck, ah, truck traffic on it that to try to get it sprayed and at the same time, the minute they blade it the next morning, it's instantly washboarded, like, because there's so much traffic, so.
Can them to do a dish, calm them the hell out of the gravel?
It's terrible.
So again, there's no way to go around.
The county's telling them to take their big trucks down that road. And then all you have, all the stuff for River's Edge, though, you have all the gravel trucks, you have all the concrete trucks. There's almost more traffic going on that road to River's Edge than there is to Lost River.
Yes.
Can we direct the county to, to change the route? Can we ask them to stay off?
We would have to change our old restriction policy on Wall.
Yep, that's what we have.
If we, if we change that, then they can't force them to go down.
Yeah, you have to get the tolls and do the same. Put it in basements, put it in landscaping, I mean-
Yep, they can't go down.
There's a lot going on.
How many houses are going up? Well, and, yeah.
I don't know the exact number, but I mean, there's more trucks, we watch them every day, we go out there every morning and ninety percent of the traffic is going to River's Edge.
Yeah, aside from a few stragglers that they-
So why can't, again, we, I don't care what the county says, but I shouldn't say that, but, you know, I care what the county says.
Well, we can't really tell them.
Why can't we direct them to go around the other way?
Well, we can change our weight restriction on that road and, or, or we can start with the conversation with Jason Benson and just say here's what we're proposing to do is lower the weight restriction.
Also trucks going that way would be affected by weight restrictions.
Well, the, the other element of this is we're gonna be starting down Wall, so there's gonna be construction on Road here in another week, two weeks.
And I think that road's gonna end up being, I mean, probably a good chance it'll be closed.
Yeah.
So that's what I mean, so, can, can we ask the county to redirect their traffic because we're gonna be doing this construction project?
Yep.
I don't, I don't necessarily think it's the county, I just think it's the deliveries are coming, coming to that place, I mean, the only ones that the county says go that way are the oversized, they have to be permitted, and they direct your route.
But that doesn't change the traffic, because even if we change the weight restriction, if you're still getting a bunch of smaller vehicles up and down that road, it doesn't change the problem.
Right, but as far as overweight vehicles go, that would, like, I've talked to Rupert, he's the new truck reg guy. He said, if you guys put a sign up there that says this weight restriction, he's like, this is my new favorite place to hang out. Literally, that's what he said.
We have to talk to township because the first part of that road's theirs.
But the other thing we could do like the county does too, and it, it did help the county for their diversion project is put for local traffic only, and that does help. How much? I can't say, but-
It's a delivery, I mean.
Yeah, but there's certain amounts that's gotta go down there, but I know when I talked to Jason Benson about it, because I had neighbors out there that were affected that on the border of the city, of Horace, and he said, we'll put that down and see how, much good it does, but I've seen people turn around when they get to see local traffic only, so I know it works. So, that might be an idea.
In our neighborhood, we get a lot of truck traffic because we're memory lane, and then it really does, and then it restarts again in River's Edge. So we get a lot of traffic that comes through.
Think it and just goes through.
And then they come around, turn around and they go back, go back up.
Just so that you-
Yeah.
Peace with these guys are saying.
Yep, I've heard that.
Maybe that would be a bad idea.
That would be great.
And our memory lane sign is missing on our, so we stole it? I don't know.
Where'd you put it, sir?
Sit in your-
I'm not a little bit sure if you'd be going on memory lane.
Plus you forgot, you know?
So we're gonna have a street sign that's gonna get stolen a lot.
Well, I think it needs to get like ground out on the edge of something, put on a screw.
Right, once it's there, it's there.
Or put a lock.
So there's a lot of stuff that can go on in that road, so, there's a lot of players involved in that, so, we'll leave it at that and move on.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, the Arrowood second project, Improvement District two thousand sixteen, I don't think that one's right. It should be sixteen-one. Uh, the punch list has been completed, I'll schedule a final inspection and acceptance review.
Have we signed off on it because there was a complaint from the Landmark yesterday?
No, we haven't. I'll talk to you about that tomorrow, Ben. Uh, Street Improvement District two thousand fifteen-three, the seventy-third paving, the seal coat was done, uh, two weeks ago. Project is complete, another one that we'll schedule a final acceptance and, or final inspection and acceptance review on. Um, if you skip down to the bottom, Brian, you should come up to a couple of memos I prepared for you guys. Uh, the first one is for a pedestrian crossing at New York Casey's and the, um, Elma Horace Elementary. If you scroll down just a little bit, Brian, go to the location map, this is kinda, kinda what I, what I came up with here. Sharon and I talked to Jason Benson with the county and he kinda suggested this and we kinda threw it around. Just to put some numbers to something, um, I based it on a, on a, uh, five foot wide, six inch thick concrete sidewalk connecting the two halves, uh, we'll have to put some culverts in there to continue the drainage. Um, I did have some, uh, striping in there too, um.
So we'd have to expand the culverts to twenty-four inch?
No, no, we have to add culverts to the twenty-four inch, because we wouldn't be cross, where we're crossing is just open ditch.
Right.
Where the dash lines are, those are the existing culverts and we can't, we can't alter that drainage.
This is a ditch.
Yeah, I know.
So we would-
You should extend the culverts.
We could extend, well, we'd have to add one on the east.
It looks like you're putting a, a covert across the frontage.
Oh, no, that's just the continental striping. I tried to get fancy.
Okay, alright. That's why I was confused.
Yeah, so, so no, no. It just, where we cross on the, on the, uh, east side there, we have to put a covert there, and on the west side, we either extend that one or just put, put one in there. Uh, that twelve inch coming underneath that access road kinda throws things a little bit, I'd like to have that crossing a little closer to the intersection, but then we come into a little bit bigger of a project by moving along around that, uh, piping. So, it's just kind of an FYI for you guys, it was requested, I will provide it if you will. Really, if you do get some more, do some more work with trails, tied in with that if you want, kind of the thing.
We would love to have it like tomorrow.
Yeah, so.
For real, like before school starts because of the number of teachers. And frankly, even in the summertime, all those residents over in Chestnut, Ironwood, all those neighborhoods, even from Southwood, Northwood, that all come over and they all cross over to have a nice crosswalk would be-
Yeah, so, I mean, like I said, it's for your information, if you guys wanna talk over and do something on it, certainly can.
Does that include any type of signage, lighting, that kind of stuff, does it?
It's got-
You have warning panels listed.
Those are the yellow bumps on the, uh, curb inlets, they're, they're for the canes.
Okay, yeah, exactly.
We could get one of those signs you stick in the road, you know, that says like, you know, those ones that go in the middle, that you can get one down.
I mean, should we include something?
It should light up.
Yeah, there, there, I mean, there's some, not a lot of contingency in here, but that's something you could think about was be putting some sort of a button activated crossing or something similar to like by Cheyenne on Thirty-second Avenue.
Sure.
Something like that where there's some, but they are expensive to do and you can do them solar, so they may be just, that's a little bit more, but.
Signs would have to be approved by the county too.
So, yeah. And I thought about too, if you would go for a ten inch, a ten foot wide, basically double the estimate, but five is kinda what's around that area. Ten would be nice, but ten gets you to be quite a bit more expensive, so I just provided you with five.
Well, again, what do we need now and what do we need in the future?
In the future, we need at least ten, but five would be, you know, you could, you can certainly add to it once you have a, you can add five feet next to it.
You do your dirt work for a ten and then just pave a five and add five on later, I mean, it's, it's just an option, like I said, I just wanna get you guys some numbers so you could see what was, what the potential was for a pedestrian crossing.
I'd like to see something with some decent signage. We hear about the speeding along there and, you know, the last thing we need is to create a crosswalk where you encourage kids to cross there and all that happens, they get hit.
Yeah, become targets.
Exactly, you know, that's, so I'd like to see something added on to make sure we're covering this decent signage, it lights up, sends fires, whatever, you know?
Well, and you know, I think, I mean, can we take the money for this out of the highway budget, because it's, it's part of a road, you know, and it's a crossing, that's the whole purpose of it.
Yeah, it's very doable.
I mean, I think that's a, and, and the signage is important, especially in that part of the road where there's so much traffic.
And foot traffic.
Yeah, you're right.
But to have that crosswalk there would be, boy, I tell you, people in your neighborhood would be like dancing. Your kids have asked me for this crosswalk. So, I love to see it. The teachers in the school have asked for it, so whatever we can do to make that happen.
Do you wanna push on as a council?
I'm sorry?
Do you wanna push on as a council and do it?
Yeah, I mean, I'll make the motion to do it.
I would like to move on with.
Are the trails gonna be on the east side? I mean, are you doing more other trails?
Right now, there isn't the plan for east side trails, we're gonna go up the west first.
There's, the trail that, we have, a trail that we're working on from the school, so it would be on the west side going north up to seventy-six to be able to cross over to the new school. That's the one we've been working on for the last two years, I guess I've been working on it even more. I'm now working on a trail on the east side, which will connect from the old railroad tracks following that north to connect into the school that way. So, that's a separate project I'm working on, so.
I mean, as long as it's fit into whatever you're planning.
Well, that's the whole point is that you can have it this way and you can get to the school and you've got connectivity. But the piece that's missing is how do you get across that road to get to the place that everybody goes to? Whether it's a ball field, it's really connecting the schools together in the big picture. But it's getting people across that road safely, if they're going to the ball field, even for a baseball game or a softball game or to go to the park, there's no crossing, so.
Was there a, was there a motion?
Well, Adam, I think his point would-
I'd be kinda curious to find out, uh, like on veterans, right by, uh, the, uh, wherever that school is. Or just come over there, yeah, where they've got the speed signs there. I'd be curious to find out where it flashes, how fast you're going, curious to find out from West Fargo PD or if Cass County's got any of those anyplace. If that actually prohibits some of the speeding there, and if we could put one of those up, if we ask the county if we could do that.
It does, I've, I've put them in cities.
Same way on, uh, Twenty-Fifth Street.
Yep, yep.
Going by that school there.
I would assume the county would be all for us doing it as long as we're paying the bill, but, and I know those signs are very expensive too, but, I mean, something to look at.
You can permanently put those up by the cemetery, coming down, give a curb traffic.
Exactly.
Because it flashes red and it shows that you're speeding.
Yep, exactly.
You know, I'd say that maybe that's a second, part A of this project is to find out how much that sign is gonna cost and get, get something like that as part of it.
Last one did was fifteen thousand, it's gone. Last one did was fifteen thousand, it's gone.
Okay, so it makes it fifty grand.
So, and that, but that was, that was a couple of years ago and that maybe was on the high side then, so, but fifteen thousand that we paid for one of those DSDSs.
Okay, so then for signage at the crossing itself then, is that, I missed maybe?
It's not in there, no, I, there's, there's a basic signage, not, not, no type of pedestrian activated or something, and that's.
The engineer moved forward to put more detailed signage um, included in the bid. And he can come up with this with options, but first to move forward with this, cause this is a good thing.
You think that's something Jim that you can have for us the next go around?
I should be able to, yeah.
Jim, how long would something like this take?
To build? I don't see it taking more than two, three weeks. Well, if we get going, I mean, we have a twenty-one day advertising period, so that's kind of a.
What's, what's your dollar threshold for having the bid out though?
Well, that's true, we could quote it, we could quote it. Depending upon how much we add.
Well, I mean, we shouldn't go over a hundred thousand.
Wouldn't think.
I wouldn't think, I mean, right, okay, if you got the current quotes sitting around thirty-five, if we looked at that, and that could be a secondary too with that sign, that might be a plan B. But at least have the signage there, what are we looking at, maybe forty-five, fifty? We could, and then we could just put that, the other thing for the speeding thing.
Well, cause we're gonna need that anyway.
Do we need it now?
Later, no, but.
That's what I'm saying, we could bid this one where you can keep it under maybe fifty.
Yeah.
Dumb question, Mr. Merritt, does the school have anything to do with signage, I mean?
Don't know.
I mean, all the ones we're talking about are by schools. You know, the till with the blinking, I mean, it's. School, it's a block from the school on both sides.
Well, then we could talk to the county, they got funds, maybe they wanna buy the sign.
Let's get the basic signage, get this thing in, we worry about that other sign a little later.
Corey?
Yes, sir.
Hell of a project for the Lions Club, huh? Mister President?
I'm not president anymore, I'm off that now. I'm past, I am history.
Past president.
Past.
Oh, so we could go and ask the Lions for funding, I'll write them a letter.
Absolutely, they might kick in.
And just ask them for.
We have to spend our money.
I don't, I got no problem doing that, I'm just wanting to clarify that I am past president.
How much money should we ask them?
So you have more time.
Alright, so I make a motion that we uh, move forward with this project and it's by including basic signage and getting quotes.
So, do we wanna, do you wanna, we wanna do plans and specs, we have to do that in order of quoted, so we wanna go forward with plans and specs.
Okay, so Dave made a motion. Second, Sharon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Yeah. Let's move with that, Jim, let's see what we can come up with in the next go around here. If, while you're at it, do you wanna put an option to quote that other signage then too?
Do you want just one DSDS or I'm assuming just one coming into town?
Well, coming off a stop sign, so is that.
I don't, by the time you, I don't think.
Coming into town is worse, but going out of town eventually would. Yeah, but I'd say coming in for starts.
Yeah, if you were gonna put one coming in, I'd do it on the south side. Do one there and there, coming in and coming in.
Give me a number, let's see what we got.
Yeah, 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 yes, so we'll just do one, one DSDS in that vicinity.
But it gives us an idea of what we're dealing with for costs and then we can kinda get an idea of what we gotta deal with here.
Okay.
Alright.
Pass that, and now the uh, next item that was kind of a for your information is the preliminary engine report for the. Connection to Olivia's Acres.
Yep.
So, uh, there's really no action for this, you just directed to prepare report that I did.
Quite a bit cheaper than I expected.
Oh, really?
We were thinking a half a million at one point, I know.
Yeah, we're about six hundred and some, I added some things into it and cleaned up the estimate, so. So that would be, if you scroll down a little bit, Brian, that's just, uh, we're taking sewer of Forest Main from. From uh, Olivia's Acres and running it up to Lagoon, so. I don't know what's happening with that subdivision right now.
Less infrastructure in that areas, well, that's why it's cheaper?
Um, yeah, it's, it's a shorter run. You know, we're not going, we're not going so far in.
Do you do the right of way on the west side of County Seventeen?
I just picked one, yeah, it, it's not, it could go on the east side, it, I just picked a side.
If you gotta cross the road.
You gotta cross the road at some point.
Would this tie into Arrowood?
It, it could, we would have to do a little analysis to see if the Liberty Lift Station could handle the additional flows. Um, but originally when we had proposed this project to the developer, it was taking it straight to Lagoon. So that's the way I continued it this way, so.
Because then we could add other, could we add?
It's a capacity.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Like Vistos?
Vistos, Vistos, yes, we would be able to put a lift station down there to service the Vistos. Uh, we should be able to pick up some of the stuff north of, of Olivia's, so.
So anything here?
Yeah.
To what density or you would have?
I didn't go to that extreme, extreme on it. Because we don't know, that's its own ag right now.
Right, it's, it's a crapshoot.
It's a crapshoot, that's why I, you know, we're. The request that we had was to get service to Olivia's Acres, so.
And it would provide service for this industrial park right now?
Yes.
It would just, we all see that there's gonna be development coming down there too, so just, think ahead a little bit.
Nobody's asked north and nobody's asked rest yet, so.
You wanna bet they will when they start seeing this coming around?
Yep.
Well, we know Olivia's wants it, you know, Vistos is there, you know, Superior's talking.
Yeah.
So you.
Yes, it does open.
I mean, you gotta think, you gotta think ahead a little bit just to make sure that we don't.
Right.
Undersize this thing and we gotta go back.
But I understand we can't go too big either because of.
But that's where you might want to go and start asking.
Well, that's what I'm worried about.
Start asking people.
And kinda get that survey going.
I mean, that.
But.
Could we use like Survey Monkey or something easy? Do you want ser, do you want, would you want?
We gotta get into those, they gotta know about it, that's the problem wise, some people are still not. Yep.
That's what they all say.
We're calling them on the carpet now, do the survey, right?
Well, I mean, if we, you know, if we put it in Horace Happenings and had Survey Monkey. Everybody has access to email or has someone who has access to, to the internet. Even if they don't, they know someone who does, that they could do it, cause it sets up too much of a question survey and quick and easy and we get our responses really quickly.
Jim, did you see anything?
I would love to try it.
Just difference in what we're having to do going north, I mean, we're still just dealing with the standard stuff, right?
Yeah, just put the pipe in the grill, pretty much.
When you say now bringing it into the lagoon, I mean, seriously, it goes right.
Just take it right in and just.
Okay.
Because this would be a forced, so would there any, these businesses would, are they on subject today?
They are, they're not part of the city service.
So, anything over here, but all these?
Those are, those all go north.
These are all on subject, sewer, sewer today?
Yep, they all go down to Park and then back to the lift station over here.
These are all connected to Arrowood.
Liberty, yep, and the uh, the stuff to the north there, right, Arrowood Third. Right there, uh, yep, right there, that's all set up to go into Liberty right now.
So right, it's going this direction?
Yep. And everything south of the Danielson stuff is, is ag.
Right.
Has anybody had a conversation with Superior about their future plans?
It's been quite a while.
Well, I know last winter they were out there doing bore sampling. From the sampling guys, it sounded like it was.
On which side, near Vistos?
Right on the north side of where the North Arrow is, to your right. All the way on the far right side, they were out there sampling.
But I talked.
Oh, they're going this way?
Yeah.
They'd really back off the gas, I mean, ag isn't where it's been.
No.
So they're a little conservative on it, but they still wanna, it's a matter of when, is what Troy's saying, do you wanna do it to just?
I'd say with commodity prices start coming back up again, they might be a little more interested, but right now I can see why they'd be cautious, I would be too.
Alright, anything else on this guys, or we can move on?
That's all I have, okay.
You didn't talk about number eight, the storm sewer policy?
I just said that we're in, we are at a stalemate, we need to meet with the attorney to hire some stuff up there.
Right, so I, all I wanted to add was that since we're developing a storm water policy, it would be important, I would think. To include that in the developer agreement, especially with a commercial development coming online, a school coming online, Olivia's Acres. And some of these other things that we know are like here. That I, I would really like to have that as part of it because it's going to be, it's gonna be important.
Or at least be able to point to it, that it's already in place.
Here's the policy and here's the things you can conform with.
It'll all be part of the permit process also. For storm water policy.
So, that's my only.
Okay, anything else guys?
We'll go back to number five here, that's Sanitary Sewer Improvement District twenty seventeen dash oh two, that's the SS Online Fargo. We took, we took bids on July sixth, we had nine bids submitted, we opened eight of the nine bids. One of them, we had a discrepancy with some of the paperwork that was in the bid, so we did not open the, did not open the bid itself, so. The low bidder on the project was KPH Inc., uh, they were at one million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, one forty-nine, sixty-five. The estimate was about one point seven million, so it came in about five hundred thousand under the estimate, so.
Oh, bummer.
Yeah, very, very good price, very good prices, so.
Yep.
Can you say those numbers again, David?
Uh, the low bid was one million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, one forty-nine and sixty-five cents.
Sixty-five cents.
Sixty-five cents.
You gotta have the sixty-five cents.
Yep, all parts, all the original bid numbers, so. Estimate was about one point seven million.
Okay.
So, good prices. Of the eight bids that we opened, seven were under the engineer's estimate, so.
So does that?
Very hungry contractors, they're looking for.
So we, our process then?
The next step for that, oh, I'm sorry, the next steps for this?
Yep, hold on one sec. Um, next step, we still have three easements that Kent is working on obtaining out there, I think it's down to language on a couple of those. And one of them is in regards to uh, trees. Uh, the Christiansen Brothers. And one of the options that we can get by with there or do different would be go back into the county highway right away. And just do a directional bore through that area, then you don't need to get an easement from the Christiansen Brothers.
Does that raise the price then?
We have a price for it, I mean, you're, they want payment for their easement and for their trees, so you're probably gonna save money by directionally boring it.
Okay, and so it's, it's a wash, either we're paying them up for the trees or we directional bore.
Correct.
That's what we were wondering about, what the cost differential is gonna be on that.
It should be, should be very close, just looking at it.
Now, is the state gonna have any issues with that as far as their?
So, at that, we don't need the easement then?
No, if you wanna do that and go back into the county highway right away and do a directional drilling. We could do a change order with the contractor, just to add that quantity on, take off the, the quantity of open cut. And then you don't have, then we don't need an easement from the Christiansen Brothers.
Lucas, does that kinda, you and I talked about this this afternoon, so.
Yep.
The other easements, I think, are still, Paces, I think they're still working on some language with the Paces, or Lakeview Heights property out there. And then the other one I think is the subdivision on the east side of Prairie.
Terra Orchards.
Terra Orchards, yeah, they're working just on some language, I think Lucas and Jack are working the language out on that one there, so.
I think Paces one, we don't know how to answer for the school, the school is waiting to know what they're gonna do with the park.
Yep, gotcha, so.
Well, I don't believe that, we, we don't have, I don't think anybody has any problem with anything.
No, I don't think so, I think it's just.
It's just, it's logistics in with, we're doing a park district and we're trying to get the park district.
Okay.
To move faster.
Let's get everybody in a room and get it done.
Okay, you said, you said the red flag word. Yeah, that's the concern, right?
I think it's something where you just need to get everybody in the room and let's get this, get it worked out and let's get it figured out.
Okay, so.
Well, and, and I think that from, with the park district, the last that I heard was. That they have a pretty general agreement with the school district. And it comes down to some, you know, it's gonna be very general, but they had met with the engineers for the school district. But I had suggested that they contact you guys because I think that whenever we have engineers involved, that we should have someone from the city side as well. To kind of do a review and represent our interest, not just that of the school district, and so. I passed that on and hopefully they've gotten in touch with you.
I have not heard anything, I'll check with Kent and see if he's.
Okay, I will, uh, we'll talk after the meeting, I'll give you the contact info, or I'll just forward an email to you and.
Okay.
You can be in the loop because that's, we don't wanna hold it up and I certainly want you guys to be, to have our. Eyes on the project as well.
I mean, the, the, the big piece here is that, alright, we're trying to get the instructions underway, so. At what point do we hit the, have, we can't make it by November?
Well, talking with KPH, it sounded like they're not gonna start construction until October.
Later this year.
Yeah.
The plan is to devote a lot of resources.
Get it done in four weeks?
The plan is to devote a lot of resources to it and just knock it out.
Just go, so. Three crews.
And if we have weather problems, then what?
I know, then we're.
Then you have a thousand dollar a day damages provision in there. Liquidity damages.
So, if they're starting in October?
We haven't, we haven't been provided an official schedule.
That's just what rumors we heard.
We haven't been provided an official schedule.
Yeah, but what do we have to get done first before we can award a bid, what's, you have some of these things?
Easements and then SSL funding.
So where, where we have the funding? Funding, the draft application for the SRF funding, the revolving loan fund has been sent to the health department. I do have to get that facility plan done into them and then they approve it from that, so. How long does that generally take? Uh, it depends on when the industrial commission meets, cause this project is over a million dollars, the industrial commission has to get their sign off on it, so. I need to get the date for the day meet in July for.
The sooner we can get it in, the better.
Right, so what do you need from us then, I mean, basically, you got the numbers, you guys have got, submit that, and what else would you need?
My thought would be is you could award the project contingent upon SRF funding and contingent upon obtaining the easements. Then that way the process is started, we can get that information into the SRF.
Yeah.
And get their blessing on it, cause we have to get their blessing on it, that they will grant you approval to award the project. Cause they have to go through all their paperwork first, then they'll grant you approval to award it, but. Once they do that, if you guys have already made a motion to approve it, contingent upon those things, we get the easements, we get the approval from the health department. You can start signing documents.
Lucas, I know you're a little sketchy on that, so.
I'm hesitant to do that because like I said, there's still potentially three easements out there that have not been acquired. And then on top of that, are we gonna let, contractors are very eager to get going on this, I know they said October, I don't know what they're, when they're actually going to start. If they start on this and there's an easement and they go on somebody's land, start digging, well then the city is now trespassing.
Right.
And then if they start on this and that funding isn't there.
We won't award.
We, we won't award until the easements are obtained and in place and.
Kemper started before.
Could you promise that?
Yeah, that's just it, I just.
We had the funding.
We had the.
I think two weeks won't hurt if you just.
Is that gonna hurt if we wait two weeks, John, to try and get just some more of this stuff squared? I don't really wanna hold this up, but I kinda wanna, I'm listening to the attorney here a little bit too.
So you're saying we would look at this in our next meeting?
Yes.
That we'd approve?
Okay.
This is rock and roll.
Is there a chance we could get the easements?
Kent is, Kent is gonna be up here tomorrow working on those.
Cause we're gonna circle back to the easement for the school.
The Paces easement is really not a big, like, they're, they're pretty much said, yeah, that's fine. They're just trying to figure out to make sure that, cause there has to be a dedication or an agreement to share. Facilities, and if they can come to that agreement to share facilities, so that they don't have to dedicate certain amounts of land and the easement is fine. I, I, I don't think the easement is of any consequence, but at the same time, park board just has to finalize their agreement.
They have.
Put it on the checklist so that we can put it in.
I've got that, they sent it tonight. The park board had a special meeting last night, they signed the document.
That, then I'm pretty sure that the easement is.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that part's done. It's signed, it's signed, it's in the, it's in the school's hands, so that part's done.
Okay, so we're good.
So it's one out of three, right?
Yep, so we got two left then.
So if they don't use Christiansen's, which I don't know if, if we're gonna do that or not, but that one seemed like it wasn't close, that's the one that.
But that's what we're talking about, we're talking about going to plan B and we're gonna bore.
The one we could move the, move the line closer to the, to the highway and then bore it, directionally bore it, then you'll.
So that's, now that one's.
Yeah, so that'd be basically two down.
What's the last one?
Terra Orchard.
So that's Jack, that's just, that's some, that's some paperwork.
Called me today, said he was gonna send me an email, so I haven't got that yet.
Do you feel more comfortable now?
Well, yeah, I mean, if you don't need Christiansen's, that's, like I said, that's the one that's going to be.
I know, that's what we talked about, that's afternoon, so that's why I'm just saying.
Can I ask what their issue is? They would like compensation for the trees and-
Compensation for those trees up there. On the east side of seventeen up there.
Are they quality trees?
Terra, Terra View wants compensation for trees?
No, no, Christiansen's. Correct.
So.
One trees are ten thousand a piece.
You keep working on that, Russell, you keep working on that, buddy. You got some of that black walnut stuff up your way, huh?
I do, I do.
Alright.
Okay, I'm sorry I'm dumb here, but I, the reporter here, why was Larsen excavating highlighted, there are two numbers?
They might have had an error in their calculation, just a mathematical error. We correct, we go through and check all the extensions for correctness, and if it's altered, we highlight it to show that it's been modified.
Means that in their bid, they wrote down the-
And that's where you're writing down the bottom, I take it.
That's the correct, the number down on the bottom, correct.
Oh.
Yeah, so R.L. Larsen had an error in their bid, and Geo Haggard had an error in their bid, but it didn't affect who was lower.
The unit prices governed.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
What do you think, Ash?
What is our completion date?
November fifteenth.
We need to have this thing up and running, what's everybody, what are we committed to?
We, we-
Says November fifteenth.
November fifteenth.
November fifteenth is when we've arranged with the Fargo to get that list stationed and so forth operational.
So our biggest thing after that, then, or before that, is determining our funding and how we pay for this, not the SRF funding, but how we as a city pay it back, whether it's assessment, or special settlement, or we do a combination of something.
And we have, right, it's gonna be a combination.
Which we haven't determined yet, right?
Which we have not determined.
But that would be.
Right.
That's coming. And what happens if we don't make that November fifteenth?
Thousand dollars a day penalty to the contractor.
Yeah, he's aware of that, too, so I mean, I like this as something, I mean, if he starts in October, he basically knows he's got six weeks to rock and roll and get that done.
Yes.
What's Fargo gonna say?
If what?
What?
Is there one in November fifteenth?
Yeah.
That, that's the expected construction completion date.
Right.
They're, if it does, if we don't get connected, that means they, we're not sending anything to them, and.
No harm, no foul?
I, like, we don't send anything into the list station, so.
Definitely a foul.
Right, we, we haven't, we haven't talked about that option, what if it doesn't happen? I, I can have that conversation with Jim, just asking that question.
Should be a problem.
It shouldn't be an issue, but what if?
Exactly.
I have one question on the what if, are we not gonna give permits out to Lost River then? Are you gonna give permits out, expect sewer to be done, and then they start building homes out there, cause I know there's multiple people that wanna start building out there this fall? And that doesn't get done, it doesn't go through this winter, then what?
Same thing as River's Edge.
But that's, I'm just saying.
It's gotta get done.
But exactly, but so are we gonna hold off on permits until they know what's gonna be done, or?
If Lost River is not completed and accepted, I wouldn't write a permit.
But, but exactly, but we've started on open one, because they've already said there's like forty lots out there that they wanna go on, or talking about wanting to do this fall.
I heard forty-five.
But exactly, that's just a question I have.
We're, we're in what if, so, I mean, so contingency planning.
Let's get back to what we know right now.
Yeah.
But our general statement, we wouldn't provide.
Yeah.
Correct.
We're not ready to provide permits, and we're not gonna provide.
So.
That's where you have to go.
Right.
Let's get this done in the next two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, it's gotta be our priority.
I said, I mean, yeah, let's get all the last bits and pieces done, then we'll come back in two weeks.
Won't, won't affect anything if we bring this up the next meeting?
Does that matter?
Because by, because by then you should have all the.
Should have all the.
All the easements and everything should be.
And we'll have the application submitted for SRF, hopefully, so hopefully, as we can ask them to turn it around.
The draft, the draft has been sent to them, there's just some other.
We just need their approval, and Deanna is probably, that she will approve it, so.
Well, those are for the industrial question.
Is it a big problem to proceed with, with, with the easements?
Yes.
I respect the decision.
Okay, let's put it this way, if it's not gonna change anything for waiting two weeks, let's hang loose for two weeks, let's get rid of this paper trail, we get out of it. We get back here in two weeks, we're done.
There's not enough for reward.
Yep, let's just wait, two weeks soon, okay?
Good.
We'll table it for two.
Okay.
Alright. Next.
That's all I have.
It's all for engineering.
Awesome, okay, Sharon. Oh, you wanna do that?
Before you-
Yes.
You wanna, she, she's got a question for you, Cole might have given you a heads up here, we'll figure, it's her portfolio, we'll let you have that conversation.
We were talking about the ATV class, and I thought we would visit with you because you seem to have all the knowledge.
Yeah, I talked to Eric, um, today, um, so basically, you guys got a bunch of options, he just gave me a bunch of dates that he has open that are here soon, um, those are the dates that Cole gave you there, uh, and then he said that he has had good luck, and he'd recommend, I mean, it's totally up to you guys what you guys wanna do, but he said sometimes it's a good idea to wait till like fall when school's in, and you can kinda promote through the school and stuff like that. Um, and he said that he can, basically, however you guys wanna do it, he can come down here, all we need is a room, he's got his own projector and everything. There's a, it's called the Jake Starr Foundation, um, it's for this, this Jake Schockman, he is a kid that was killed in an ATV accident, and they, they basically, they raise money or whatever every year, and they pay for all these classes, so, um, so it'll be free of charge for any kids or anything that wanna show up for that, so.
So in his experience, or in your experience, what is the difference between the online or the classroom portion and the practical side? Because my experience has been the kids need the practical side, they can do the other part online, but that may be, he may have different experience, and it would be good to know that, cause we certainly want both, if we could do both.
Yeah, and I think you probably could do both, um, I didn't, uh, get his specific input on like which he recommends, or whatever, I guess the only upside for the classroom is that you can have unlimited amount of students, whereas the practical one, you can have a max of eight students. Um, but, I mean, sometimes the, the practical thing's good for some of those kids.
Practical's great, and you know, with the dates, is that one class of eight that day, or is it two classes of eight, and then what was the time? Cause it, there was, uh, you know, was it in the afternoon, in the evening, in the morning?
Um, you know, he didn't give me specific times either, um, basically, he just said that each class would be four hours long, and it would just be on one of those dates, so, um, you could pick whatever date you wanted, and he would just come in for the four hours, I would imagine.
So you could do, I mean, so I guess what I'm saying is, if we picked August eight, say, do you do four hours in the morning, four hours in the afternoon, so you can have two classes that day? And then do the kids bring their own four-wheeler ATV, or is he supplying them, you know, I mean?
Yeah, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, he, uh, he told me that I can give him a call, too, um, he's just at home right now, so maybe, should I give him a call right now, and I can get these answers for you right away?
Is this something you can do offline?
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can connect, yeah, if you call him.
Sure.
We get done with the meeting here, then I think you guys can sync up, and we can square time.
Yep, that sounds good.
I picked up on the wait till school starts.
That's what we had first in business, yeah.
Yeah, he said that he's had good luck with that, as far as getting to show.
So we can get the kids all in one shot, like that, we can get to the room and say, hey, we're having this, you know?
But you know, that's where your challenge is, when you can only have eight, so then do you run multiple, you know, two classes of eight, so that's what I mean, that's, there's like so many questions that come up, cause eight's a really small number.
And maybe it, uh.
Or maybe it's one class of twenty-four, and you get four instructors, or you're gonna get?
Maybe this fall, you promote it through the school, and you get a classroom of twenty kids that wanna do it, and then, uh, and then you can promote a couple of classes of, of the practical one that they can sign up for, or something like that.
So anyway, I think we'll just kinda visit with him first before we make the decision.
That sounds, that looks good.
Okay, um, and then, only other thing is, uh, the trailer, you brought up the trailer, that was stolen by your guys' place, not actually stolen, um, the owner just came and took it, so.
Nice.
Go and get it replaced, or fix it somewhere else.
You really asked, Paul John, make a goal.
I found that out this afternoon, so, got that squared away, nobody saw anything over there, so.
Always well, good.
Any questions or anything?
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
There are two things I forgot to bring up earlier, by the way.
Okay.
Um, online, you have, I believe people are able to pay their utility bill online now, is that right?
Not quite yet.
Not yet?
We're working on it.
Did you guys happen to see the email about paying citations as well?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
It's on the list.
And then, uh, if we could get some sort of brochure or something like that, that we can hand out at night to unite, for notifying you? So if people have an idea, maybe we can get something from them themselves, or company, I don't know. We can hand that out, maybe just, uh, step by step for people, what they need to do to get on there. That's it?
Yeah.
One thing, I can probably do, need to just figure out the process, if, if we wanna allow people to do the municipal payments online, what information do we need?
Uh, Vance is gonna know the best, how he processes that information.
Details, for, if people wanna pay municipal fines and so forth, you have the details that I would need, that they would need supplied with the payment, okay?
I'm assuming all they really would need is a citation number, correct?
That's pretty much it.
Okay.
And a credit card.
But tell, tell Matthew, next time you see him, that I still can't print.
Okay. You can't print from the program, or?
No, from tracks.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks Cole. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, Sharon, you go ahead.
Okay, uh, I, Park Board did not send out their meeting minutes, so I'm just gonna kinda hit the high points real quick. Um, they are working on lighting for the ball field. The guy from the ball field was at the last meeting, it, round numbers are probably cost about a hundred fifty thousand dollars to light the ball field, it would be like similar to the one at Cheyenne High School, the softball field there, the company is Musco Sports Lighting, they lit all of the West Fargo ball fields, um, a number of them in Fargo, so they've got experience lighting ball fields and softball fields all around this area, so it's, they're not like some fly-by-night company. So they have experience. Um, school, they're working on some sort of fundraiser, and they've put together a funding chairperson who will be working on different fundraising mechanisms to, to raise the cost. Uh, what else? That kinda takes us to Bean Days. Uh, I'm sure everybody knows, Horace Bean Days is making a re.
Surgeance?
Surgeance this year. Yeah, the third week in August, the Bean Days Committee met a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago, to be exact, and in attendance, we had about a half a dozen or so people, so we had some good representation, we had some good ideas. The committee voted to do it that weekend, uh, talked about a bunch of ideas, put together a preliminary agenda based on what we knew, and what people had said they wanted. Uh, to date, I've confirmed the trap shoot will be Friday night, um, they've committed to that, there, you just have to send me the times and the, the detail of how you sign up, what you do, whatever, all of those things. Um, Friday night, we're talking about also having an ice cream social over at the Senior Center, and a silent auction, and they've even suggested a live auction. Uh, with the proceeds from the silent auction and the live auction, the Bean Days Committee was voted to donate all of those proceeds to the Park District for the relight, the light, bring the lights back to Freed Field, so for that, for that project, so, I've spoken to the Park District, they're thrilled, cause that was going right to their fundraising person, had wanted to do a similar event, so now we'll just tie them together. Park District also wants to do a movie night in Freed, Freed Park that night, so after dark, having movies, having a movie, a family movie, so folks can go sit outside and do that. Saturday morning, uh, we're talking about trying to put together a five K run, a pancake breakfast that the Lions have showed interest in, in hosting, doing, providing, I don't know, you're lying.
Yeah.
Has that come up yet?
Yep.
I've, I've heard, yes, the Lions are doing that. Hmm?
He's not president, did he?
No, I just, I'm old people, okay?
I got a phone call tip yesterday, or Friday, that told me the Lions are doing pancake breakfast.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get her down.
Said it's done, uh, kiddie parade nine forty-five, regular grand parade at ten o'clock, uh, talking about a car show in the afternoon, so I have to get in touch with some classic car groups to do a car show, um, there was one done in about two thousand nine, so it's not like that's never happened at Bean Days. Uh, Park District's gonna get the Games To Go stuff, um, everybody wants booths and vendors and food and stuff, there's been a lot of interest already from the community, so we've got the approval to do all that over at the Horace Lutheran Church, so this way, everybody's off the main road, there's some grass, and we can do that over there, so it's, it's coming together, and the culmination will be a street dance, and everybody remembers when, when, uh, Kelly Vista was in here, and he was talking about, he was doing a street dance, so, his street dance is gonna be the, the final, final act on Bean Days, so, it's coming together. So we're having another committee meeting tomorrow night here, six PM, anybody wants to come, please feel free to attend. Uh, we've got three committee chairs now, I've got someone from the Park Board, and someone from the private sector, so there'll be the three of us that will be coordinating everything, and then we'll have subcommittees that will work on different aspects of it, so it's coming along.
So, what I ask is.
Oh, and bingo, don't forget bingo during the.
Hopeful bingo.
Couple bingo games, and a softball game, and I probably left stuff out, but.
I was gonna ask, and I'll just throw this out there, um, has there been any discussion about the city's paying for some portion of that? Like, one thing I just thought I was doing like a, a Games To Go, if there was some kid event, you know, if there was a, a gathering someplace, whether it was a park or some area, that you already set up, could the city pay for a Games To Go for kid area?
Uh, Park District has already, has done that in the past, and they said they will be paying for the Games To Go side, although, it would be nice to either get a business to donate, or the city to donate ice cream for the Ice Cream Social at the Senior Center that Friday night, and you know, one suggest, I mean, there's a lot of ideas of how we could do that, but somebody's gonna have to pay for the ice cream and the toppings.
I know a couple of businesses that would be very open to donating.
Absolutely.
I already suggested them.
You're on that list, too.
I figured it out.
So, so, the, the other thing that, that I realized is that the previous Bean Days group, that, or the old Bean Days Committee that ran Bean Days, I've gotten in touch with the, the person who has all of the files and things from that time period, they have a checkbook that has money in there, and every year, they set money aside to cover some of the setup expenses, so, I don't know what that is, I'll probably meet with her tomorrow, so we'll find out. They have walkie-talkies, they have lists, they have, so lots of stuff, and, and once we see what that is, then we'll know what, if anything. You know, I would think the city would probably have to buy things like ribbons, or if we're gonna have games, or if they wanna contest, like something made out of beans, and so, you know, I don't know, little awards, and just to make it a fun, kind of, kind of debt.
Vance, is there any precedence with this? I don't know what the city's involvement was in prior Bean Days events. Or was it pretty much just the Bean Days Committee and the community?
We haven't donated much in the past.
Yep.
Not to say that, or who can.
Okay.
So we'll see, I mean, for the parade, mostly we need folks.
Yep, basically, to get the word out is what we need to do, that's what's gonna come back in.
So, so, yeah, so I wanna get the list of who they, who the contact people were from before, and then we're just gonna send them a letter.
Jessie, Jessie and Sarah, we'll see. Jessie and Sarah, we'll see.
Are who?
They were the last, well, make sure it's the last one.
Oh, I spoke to Deanne.
Yeah, she was with them.
And she said there's, they said there's banners that they used to put across the street, and the Lions said they'll do the, the little car train.
Yeah, we did, we can find that.
The kiddie train.
Yeah, we'll find that. They probably have Jessie's done, or two.
I talked to Deanne, she had everything, so, but thank you, Vance.
I have a question.
Uh, one thing, when you do talk to her, we need to, uh, the cattle fences, that we use for crowd control around the street dance? Cause they have, they have those, and they bought, they purchased them for this. Um, and then, other thing, if you're planning on doing a five K, we need to start looking at a route and signs, that's gonna be a big one, we don't really have much for signage.
There was one done a few years ago.
They've always did a five K, and it went to like Chestnut.
No, it went, it was, we did, there's been one done, it left at the Lutheran Church, went up through Chestnut out to the big tree. No, it went, it was, we did, there's been one done, it left at the Lutheran Church, went up through chestnut out to the big tree in the back.
Back, yeah, we probably don't wanna go that way, this go around.
Yeah.
But I think about going east and going around some.
Yeah, well, we just have to look at traffic and signage for that, so.
Yeah. And we were talking about doing it early in the morning, so like at six AM or something.
It would be Saturday morning, six AM.